Let's call this meeting to order. Today's Tuesday, June 11th, and this is a meeting of the Dunn City Council. This is a work session scheduled for the month. The time is 6:30 PM, and we're meeting in the Dunn Municipal Building for those that may be listening through Facebook and other means of media. At this time, I'd like to welcome each of you here tonight and look forward to hearing from those of you who will be speaking. I'd first like to start our meeting with an invocation, and I'd like to ask David Bradham if he would lead us in that invitation invocation, and following that, the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Galton, please. If you would, join me and stand.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day and the opportunity to come together as a governing body. We thank you for the citizens of Dunn that are here tonight. We ask, your Lord, that you would go with us throughout our meeting and help us make wise decisions. We ask that you would be with our country at this time as well, your Lord. We ask that you be with us throughout all actions that we take. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just for all.
First item on the agenda tonight is adjustment and approval of the June 11th meeting tonight. I think we do have one addition to the agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the June 11th, 2024 meeting agenda with the addition of number 5A, which is Legal Service Agreement Litigation Against Manufacturers of Forever Comm.
Second.
First motion by Councilmember Bradham, second by Councilmember Galton. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Second item on the agenda tonight is a proclamation I'd like to read, and we have an event coming up in Cotterington Park this weekend. I hope you all can attend that, and we'll have more of an announcement on that in a few minutes in the agenda. But I'd like to read a proclamation that's dated today's date, or yeah, today's date is the date of the proclamation, and it reads Juneteenth, 2024. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1, 1863, declaring all slaves shall then thenceforward and forever free, and whereas it took almost three years of conflict and loss to bring about the end of the Civil War, and in December 1865, the 13th Amendment to the United States Constitution was nationally ratified, ending the sanction institution of slavery, and whereas the news of freedom spread gradually throughout the nation, and on June 19, 1865, Union soldiers led by General Gordon Granger arrived in Gaveston, Texas and issued General Order Number 3 announcing freedom to the last slaves in America, and whereas June 19 actually became nationally recognized as National Freedom Day commemorating the abolition of sanctioned slavery in the United States and is now recognized as a federal holiday, and whereas churches and other organizations will be hosting local celebrations along with the community celebration to be held in Dunn at Cotterington Park on June 15th in remembrance of this special day in American history. Now therefore be it resolved that I, William P. Elmore Jr., on behalf of the City Council and our residents proclaim Wednesday, June 19, 24, as Juneteenth in the city of Dunn and encourage our residents who've become aware of the significance of this celebration in African-American history and in the heritage of our nation and city. And I would like to take a minute and call on Commissioner McNeil to tell us what's going on this weekend at the park.
Okay. We have involved our community as much as we possibly can to have our entrepreneurs come as vendors, food trucks, bouncy houses. We will have a lineup of guests onstage to speak and for entertainment. We're asking that everyone in the community come out, join us for our Juneteenth. Bring your lawn chairs, bring your sunscreen, bring your hats, and bring a little cash to help out our vendors and our entrepreneurs. We invite you all to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move into a public hearing in just a minute to discuss our fiscal year budget for the upcoming year, and before I open the public hearing, I'd like to read a statement. Citizens of Dunn, tonight the City Council and I are happy to hear and receive your comments on the proposed fiscal year 2024-2025 budget for the city of Dunn. The council will not vote on the budget tonight. The actual vote to adopt a budget will take place at the June 25 regular council meeting. The proposed budget has been on file and available for review since June 1. Under state law, the budget must balance and take effect on July 1. The proposed budget is the product of many months of hard work. Getting to this point is a daunting task and requires much discussion among the council, the city administration, and department heads on how best to spend the public's money. The city has many competing needs that must be weighed and balanced against each other in the budget process. This ranges from state mandated improvements to the city's water and sewer infrastructure to citizens' reasonable demands for stormwater system improvements to alleviate flooding throughout the city. It also includes departmental funding requests for new equipment and for maintenance to existing equipment. Added to these is the need to keep our employee compensation package competitive so our hardworking employees and police officers stay with us and not take their knowledge, skills, and experience to other communities. We are blessed to have such a dedicated workforce, and this council is committed to ensuring our employees are taken care of. Ultimately, a budget must be adopted that maintains the level of service the citizens of Dunn want and deserve. We must find a proper balance between what the city should spend and what the city must spend to meet the needs of the taxpayers. Obtaining that balance requires an honest analysis, frank discussion, much compromise, and tough decisions to make the process work. Thus far, hundreds of thousands of dollars of worthy requests have been removed from the proposed budget, and what you have before you is the result of that process. Along with the monetary cuts, we also will use several hundred thousand dollars of funds recognized from savings in our current budget. These funds will be used to balance the proposed budget. The budget includes a property tax rate increase of four cents per $100 valuation of real property. Each penny of property tax generates $112,942, and the proposed increase will generate $451,768 annually. The city leadership realizes there's an immediate need for major street repairs throughout our city. It is our opinion that the opportunity to borrow money for a major paving project such as this can be done by utilizing a USDA loan at a low interest rate. Therefore, the city plans to borrow between $4 and $5 million, which would allow us to have a much larger impact on paving streets and other street-related repairs. The annual debt service on that loan would be repaid by the four cent property tax increase. The entire amount of $451,768 generated by the increase will be used to repay the loan. Without this increased revenue, the significant paving project could not be done. This budget also eliminates all monetary contributions to the Dunn Police Athletic League. PAL is the only nonprofit organization receiving funding from the city. The city was instrumental in the startup of PAL in 1993 and has provided funding since its inception. In 2013, PAL separated from the city of Dunn and became a standalone 501(c)(3) nonprofit entity. Since 2013, the city has contributed $2,274,387 directly to the PAL program, even though it's totally independent of and not a city department. In addition to direct funding, one police officer has always been assigned full-time to PAL. However, the officer assigned to that position recently took a job with another agency and is no longer employed by the city. At this point, and also funded in the budget, are plans to assign another officer to PAL once the staffing shortages in the police department are resolved. The nonprofit status obtained by PAL has allowed them the opportunity to successfully receive grants and other private funding. The organization appears to have done well with those efforts. PAL's budget last year was $884,615. If they received the revenues projected in that budget, that would indicate that they were successful in raising $769,000 above the city's contribution of $115,000. We as a city are proud of the PAL organization and are thankful for the community support that they receive. Ultimately, it does not seem fair to raise property taxes and continue funding a self-sustaining nonprofit organization, even a service organization like PAL. There are many other worthy nonprofit service organizations who receive no funding from the city. In conclusion, we believe that this proposed fiscal year 2024-2025 budget strikes a proper balance of what the city must spend and needs to spend to meet the goals of this board and the citizens we serve. At this time, I would like to open a public hearing on this matter, and I would like to call on, the first one to speak would be Mr. Newshaver, the city manager, to give us a report on some letters of support that we've received.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Tonight, you have in front of you seven letters from the public that were submitted to the city clerk prior to the meeting tonight. I think the last collection we did was at 6:00 PM this evening, so there's seven letters, and each one was sent to you earlier, and then also you have a copy at your desk as well. One came from the Dunn PAL Board of Directors, one came from Emmett Aldridge of Arc 3 Gases, one from J. Dal Snipes, one from Janet Doffemeyer, one from Dr. Vias, one from Christina Harrell of the Dunn Area Chamber of Commerce, and one from Emily McBride Wilson.
All right, so having heard all of those letters, my knowledge were written in support of the PAL program.
That's right.
So at this time, I know there's several folks here that would like to speak, so I would like to, since the public hearing is open, is to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in favor or against this budget tonight. If there is, if you'll raise your hand, Cornell, if you would, please come on up, and as you get to the podium, if you would, please state your name and address for the record for the city clerk.
Good evening. My name is Cornell Robinson. I live at 904 North Leighton Avenue. I'm a former member of the Dunn City Council, also served as mayor pro tempore for about seven years, and I am here tonight to ask you to please reject this proposed budget which seeks to defund PAL. I think the idea of defunding PAL is absolutely asinine. PAL has done and contributed too much to our community to be pushed aside by the city. I understand that it's a 501(c)(3) entity, but when the city withdraws its support for that program, it's going to complicate their ability to get grants from other organizations. Those organizations are going to be trying to figure out where PAL failed. The truth of the matter is that PAL has had nothing but a positive influence on this community. PAL has helped to reduce crime, youth crime. PAL has helped to improve graduation rates in our school. PAL has made our community safer, and at the same time, PAL has taken over 60 kids who were probably on the road to prison, sent them to Boys Town where they graduated from high school, and many of them came back with college degrees. The other side of it is PAL has helped families. A lot of those families being served by PAL are single-parent families. PAL has provided role models for those children. And to date, correcting what you said, police officers over at PAL, the last one there, Chris Easton, was pulled out of PAL. He was pulled out of PAL, not replaced. He decided he'd go somewhere else. My understanding is that he still tries to volunteer some time to support the PAL organization. And the other thing about PAL, PAL improves police and community relationships. Because of PAL, and specifically because of Rodney Roland, the community learned more about the police. The police were more in the community. They helped solve crimes because some of the young people who were influenced by those police officers helped them. They provided information to them. And, you know, voting to defund PAL really makes us question your commitment to this community, to community safety, because if you listen to the news, everywhere in this state, they're talking about gangs recruiting younger and younger members. They're talking about gun violence. We don't have it. We don't have it, and one of the major reasons we don't have it is because PAL is influencing the kids. PAL not only influences the kids who go to PAL, those kids influence the kids they go to school with. They make the schools safer. And the biggest thing here is if you care about this community, about this community's safety, you won't defund PAL. And I got to finish one thing. If you go back 2018, Rodney Roland was recognized by the MLK Committee as our grand marshal for the parade that year. I don't personally know of another white officer in the state of North Carolina that has been so recognized. We are proud of Rodney Roland, what he has done for the youth in this community, and what he has done for the community, and I ask you to ask yourself, is defunding PAL the right thing to do for Dunn? I don't think so.
I haven't announced your name, but would you give your address, please?
Sure. I'm Joey Tartt, 311 Coleridge Drive here in Dunn, North Carolina. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, distinguished city council members, Mr. City Manager, and the guy that keeps us all out of trouble. I'm here representing the Dunn PAL Board. I've been serving on the Dunn PAL Board for several years now, since we sold our business here in Dunn. First, I would like to acknowledge that, yes, the city of Dunn created PAL, and it was a great program, created for the right reasons, and in 2013, when it became a nonprofit, that was at the direction of the city, and it was so that we could garnish more support in outside grants and in other instances and ways. And it kind of seems a little crazy that PAL's doing well, and PAL seems to be going to be penalized because it's doing well. We're going to withdraw the money that we've been giving to PAL and have been supporting PAL because they're doing good. The more money we raise, the more children we can help. We have around 140 children in the program in the month of April. That was our last full report, and 90 of them were from Dunn. So 65% are from Hornet Primary, Dunn Middle School, and Triton. And it's a varied breakdown, but they're all in various ages. PAL was started, and a lot of people still think of it, as an athletic team. Well, we do have basketball. We do have wrestling. We do have flag football. And let me tell you, I'm a sports supporter because it teaches children to persevere, teaches them not to quit, teaches them to be a team member, makes them good citizens. But PAL has become much more than that. We are heavily involved in academics. We're connected with the school system so that the after-school kids, we can see their grades and help them, support them in areas that they need. We have over, we have 36 children that are being mentored by professionals like yourself and blue-collar workers, but they're being mentored on a monthly basis, teaching them how to act, teaching them how to carry on themselves in difficult situations, telling them they can do things. As I bet all of you grew up with a parent telling you you could do whatever you wanted to do, whatever you set your mind to, and if you put in the hard work, and that's what these children are getting and what they need. One of the most important things to me is it creates hope, hope that they can overcome the circumstances. It's not a black and white issue. It's typically a poverty issue, and it's taking those children and giving them a foot up, that they can make a stand. PAL does not interact with all youth because a lot of your children are not at PAL, but it interacts with all youth by taking these children that don't have the availability, making them better so that they can have better interaction with all the children. If you ask the citizens of Dunn what's one of our major improvements needed, you'll hear the school system mentioned. Dunn PAL affects the school system. Without PAL, the grades are not going to be as good, the kids are not going to stay in schools longer, there are going to be problems for the police department and so How many of you have visited PAL? I invite you to come back. I invite you to come and see our new, have you been to the new address? See what we teach the children, what they have availability to learn, how to fly a drone, how to work on an electric motor, how to fix a doorknob, how to do a podcast. Do y'all know how to do a podcast? How to interview people? So how to interact with folks? How to be a good citizen in the city of Dunn? All of these things are vital and very important, but giving those children the hope that can give them the opportunity to be like you, like me, like us, is something that PAL does I ask you not to penalize us because we've done well. I've put my money where my mouth is in PAL. A lot of you have, and we're thankful, but don't penalize us because we're doing well and we're working hard to raise money. We had a golf tournament, we have a fair, we had an arts program we did, Stewart Theater recently. We're working hard to raise money. We're working hard to make PAL work when the grants are cut off so that we don't have to close down programs. So if we get a little money in our savings account, it's not bad, it's good. It shouldn't be a penalty, it actually should be a reward. So I ask you to reconsider for the children, and if there's other things that are standing in the way, let's put them behind us. This is about the children. This is about the youth. This is about giving them opportunities. Thank you.
My name is Ronald Ross. I live at 1,004 North McKay Avenue, Dunn. I remember my wife used to drive Rodney Roland, take all the kids where they had to go, and Dunn was part of that. I want to ask y'all a question and think about this question here. If we had PAL when we was coming up, don't you think it'd be a better place now? Just think about it. You ain't got to answer it, because I know it would be, because PAL have took some of the worst ones and made them better. We know this, and people sitting in this audience know this. If somebody had kids that they couldn't take care of because they didn't have the help, but PAL reached in and said, "Look, you do what you got to do, and we'll take care of this one." They done sent kids to college, and y'all want to take away from the kids, take away from the other people around here that's got a whole lot, and help the kids. I wish I had the opportunity that PAL is giving people. Now I'd be in a better place. I'd probably be sitting up in one of y'all seats. So don't take that away from the kids, understand? Because it's not fair, and you know it, I know it. I don't care how you twist and turn it. You ain't going to make lemonade out of tomatoes, but you can't help these youths, every one of them, your kid, your kid. See, y'all probably don't go to PAL, like the man said, your kids probably don't go to PAL. But there's a lot of other kids, not just white kids, black kids. There's a lot of kids need PAL in their life. If you take it from them, one of y'all going to regret it because they're going to come back and bite you. Thank you.
I live at 104 County Avenue, Dunn, and I just want to tell you, you cannot cut this funding from this program. I'm sorry, I'm emotional, but this program means a lot to me and my family. The Dunn PAL was established in 1995, just to correct you. I know you said 1993, but it was established in 1995 in the backseat of a police car. The motto is "Filling playgrounds, not prisons," and I wholeheartedly believe that they do that to this day. I believe that's what they do. And I was introduced to the PAL 11 years ago when a friend suggested that my son check out the wrestling program since he was having a bullying issue. I have a split household. My ex-husband gets my son, or at least he did, and at that time, my son was being bullied and having an issue over there, and it was never addressed and it could never be stopped. Well, we met with the wrestling coach at the PAL, Coach Nicholas Perea, who we found out was a Dunn police officer with a heart of gold for the community, and we came to find out that more of these police officers in our community have that heart of gold. They care about our kids, and that's an amazing thing because so many kids today, they hear what their parents say, they see what the media says, that police officers are bad, police officers are just going out and shooting people, police officers don't care about the kids. It's hard to find positive enforcement, positive views of the police, and the PAL offers that to our kids. My God, if you really just open up your eyes, like, I don't know why you'd want to pull funding from the PAL. That's absolutely absurd. But my son quickly took to the sport of wrestling, growing confidence in himself and making friends that are more like family a decade later. I have one of them here with me today. We entered into the after-school program and the summer program where my son received tutoring help that he needed in math and in English because God knows he wasn't getting it out of the school. Nothing against our school. Nothing against our school, our schools are absolutely fantastic, but they can only do so much. And the POW helps pick up where the school may drop off, or where parents are not able to do it. I don't know about you, but can you go back and do fifth grade math, especially when it turns into Common Core? Because I know you guys didn't learn it the same way we did. So POW picks up that, POW is constantly staying in the loop with the schools. So they know where to help our kids, especially when we can't do it. Sometimes I sit down and I look at that schoolwork, and I'm like, God, I don't know what this is. My son is a rising senior, some of that schoolwork he does now, I couldn't tell you how to do it. And I'm not saying I'm not educated, but I can't tell you how to do it. But my son received all that help at the POW, and it was an amazing program. These programs were free to me and an absolute godsend, since I was a single parent at the time when my son was in the POW. I later became employed by the POW, and my eyes were fully opened to how much the POW, the staff, and Rodney Roland helped our community. God knows where our community would be if we did not have Rodney Roland and everybody under him, including the police, not that they're under him, but working in conjunction with him. I don't know where our community would be, we would be, truthfully, in the toilet, like other people said, having gun violence, having other issues, we would have problems in Dunn if we did not have the POW. Most of Hornet County is low income and single parent families. The fact that POW is able to offer so many programs, such as after-school, the summer program, media arts, mentoring, and sports, just to name a few, at a free rate, to us parents is such a relief. There is, there are kids in our community that don't receive three meals a day at home. The POW provides a full meal and snack to many of the program's students. I've seen kids who can barely read and write at the POW get extra help, so that they can pass and graduate. Honestly, have you seen what some of these seniors are rolling out with, what their education level truly is? They're just kind of getting pushed by through the schools, and they're not up to par. And the POW picks up that slack, that POW helps make these kids where they at least sound educated, and they can get through society and be able to go and have a job, they can write a resume, they can write a sentence with proper grammar. I really don't know if you understand how deep POW runs into these kids. I've seen kids, I've seen kids where they struggle, they receive a mentor, they turn around completely so that they can thrive in our society. And isn't that what we want, our students to thrive in our society? The POW offers our youth somewhere to go other than the streets. They interact with the police, which in turn helps our kids realize, of course, cops aren't all bad, no matter what their parents, society, social media, whatever they want to say, cops are not all bad. If our kids don't have POW, or at all currently what it has to offer, what are we going to replace it with? Yeah, the streets, the kids are going to go to the streets, and I'm telling you, that's not where our kids need to be. If families have to start paying for these programs because you want to cut funding from them, the attendance numbers are significantly going to drop. Those kids are going to then have to stay at home, they're going to have to figure things out on their own, they're going to be in the streets, they're going to be doing stuff that's going to cause our police to have to constantly go down and find these kids' parents, find somebody to watch them, get them out of trouble. What are they doing? They robbing people, tearing up the town, spray painting stuff? I mean, really, do you want to add that extra onto the police? You had already stated before that the police is low with their officers, they don't have as much, so if you pull funding from the POW, isn't that going to make more of a problem for our police? Everyone complains about our youth in the community, but what are they really doing about it? The POW steps up and is a phenomenal program and really needs this money. Don't cut the funding, we really need it.[861.13][861.13][applause]
Good afternoon, my name is Nathan Williams, I live at 1002 East Edgerton Street, Apartment A. And I'll be giving my oral statement, because I feel like my testimony is, because I'm a youth that has persevered and has experienced the great love of the Dunn-Pow Police Program. So when you think of, when you rethink this, or at least reject it, then you can look upon my face and hear my testimony. So I will say this, is that growing up was hard for me in this impoverished area, and POW provided something to me that is not worth the money, it's, it's, it's worth more, it's something that's intangible, something that you can't get back. And being at home was really heavy for me and my brother, and, you know, some days I'd be sleepless. And then that all changed when my parents met Mr. Rodney Roland. And since second grade, I've been built up, grammar-wise, even in sports, not even on the sports side, it's just it, it affected my professionalism in a positive way, and I was able to carry about myself in society as a, a great citizen. Not only that, but the mentor program that we provide at the POW is so great. I've learned so many different things over the past 19 years of my life, that I don't know what I would do if I never found a POW. I'd probably be out here, not standing in front of you right now. The very love of POW has caused me to value the certain things that youth that I talk to or am in class with nowadays, they don't value the, the true economic state of not only the world, but our state and our city, the very city that they live in. And not only that, but, you know, I will say this, is POW also gives you that, I'm going to say motivation to keep going. I'll give this here. So, you know, attending POW since I was in second grade, and I was right about to graduate, I was so happy, I was so happy to get out of Dunn, to, you know, not only just get out, but build something elsewhere, but come back. So, you know, I ended up going to UNC Pembroke, went down there, it was great. And then, you know, I was a walk-on wrestler, I was pursuing a degree in business administration, accounting concentration, as I am currently now. But then, everything changed when funds came up, so I began to panic. I began to ask God, I began to, you know, sort of be in a place of, a state of not wanting to speak about that whole issue, because I was like, man, everything that I worked hard towards to get is going to be stripped away from me. But then, POW came in the back of my mind here, because I knew that even if I have to leave college, I will not stop there, because I will refuse to let the wisdom, knowledge, and power that I have acquired from different mentors to just squander away. I was determined to make a difference. And I was so fortunate to meet Dr. Janet Dochemeyer and Mr. Emmett Albert, who ironically taught me how to play chess. And all this is, is a chess thing, and it's, it's a test of faith, test, test of faith, really, is what I present to you, is are you willing to take something from the youth that is intangible? And that will change the state of the city forever? Are you willing to take that from someone? You could be greatly affecting the next Martin Luther King, the next Denzel Washington, or somebody that can do a study, you know what I mean? And it's the very opportunity of that, it's the very thing of that, that I will say this, bears fruit. And I'll go into that, is, no, you know, you don't want to mentor someone that's not going to listen to you, because that won't bear fruit. It's just as if, you won't plant, you won't plant a tree and then water it one day, but then leave and expect it to grow in the next six months, it won't bear fruit, it will wither away. But with that, if you keep this POW program, it will allow to bring a seed to a youth that can plant a tree with, and that youth could improve themselves as a person. And when that grows, they will be allowed to bear fruit, and let that fruit, which is of the POW and its knowledge that it becomes, to multiply. And, you know, before I leave the stage, I want to say, I thank y'all for at least considering a word. So then I'll leave you with this, you know? I have a passion to, I'm not going to lie, become a mentor, because I want to see that very, that very look that a child gives someone. It's like a, it's like a cry, it's not something that you can explain. I remember multiple times in my life, I happened to look upon Mr. Roland, or Chris Easton, or Nicholas Perilla with this face of cry, about like a child, how they do with their parents, of please save me, or give me something that I could use. I want to see that same feeling in another youth, so I can change them for the better. So please, if you will, to reconsider this, and please reject that offer, because it, it's not worth, it's not worth the money, it really is not. To make a difference, it's not worth the money.
Hello, my name is Shawna Cameron-Williams, my address is 1003 North Magnolia Avenue, Dunn, North Carolina. I am standing here today in favor of the POW, I would like for you guys to reconsider taking 100% of their funding. We all know that grants are good, and they're very helpful, guess POW has done very well, but grants are not guaranteed. And so they need that cushion, they need, we all know that without money, there's no way they can function. They have to feed the kids. There are so many kids that I come in contact with. I've been with the school system for 22 years. In the afternoons, when we release, we release two vanfuls of middle schoolers. You know, middle school is very crucial, they're trying to find themselves, and a lot of times, that's the time where they get into gangs, get into trouble. But it gives me peace of mind, knowing that they're going somewhere safe, they're going somewhere to eat. I have been, I have seen so many kids over the years benefit from the POW. I have been on the advisory board for the POW. Not only have I been on the advisory board, I've been a mentor, I've been a volunteer. I was on the All-American City Committee when we went to Colorado. If it had not been for the POW, we would not be in All-American City. The POW made a tremendous impact on those people that judged us that day. I remember, my son went. POW has created a cycle, not only for me, when I started out, I started out at POW, I was a teenager, I was just wanting to be wild and be with my friends, but I learned a lot at the POW. And so as I grew older, I never forgot the things that I learned. And so when I became grown, became an educator, not only did I give back to the POW, but I helped other people because people had helped me. My son was a POW member, my son went to Nationals. Back then, I was a single mother, there was no way I could have provided money for him to travel to Michigan. He went many places over the years. And now my son Joshua, he travels and plays basketball with the POW. Last summer, we went, and there was about 60 children and probably 60 adults. And they provided food, they provided hotel and transportation. Some of those kids, if it wasn't for the POW, they would never even see the beach, they would never even leave Dunn. So what I'm asking you is just to reconsider the budget for 2025, because the POW really does need that $115,000. Thank you so much.[1420.14][1420.14][applause]
And what else?
I'm Shepard Marcy, I live at 706 East Duke Street, and I live close to Todd Park, I can go in my neighbor's yard and go out and, you know, see what's going on. And, and seem like it serves not our people, you know, basically your people, you know? I mean, you know, like the baseball stuff going on, and usually when a lot of blacks out there, it's only, when the little kids out there playing football. So I'm just pointing that out, you know, because a lot of resources must be, you know, spent over there. And during the summer, they put on a lot of baseball tournaments. And again, you know, mostly your people, not ours. And so that mean that a lot of resources, must be city resources being used, okay, to carry out these activities. And it must be a lot of money, some of that money could be, you know, stay with POW. And I also taught at Triton from its inception up to, I believe, 2003, or 2004. And those kids that went to POW were, you know, better behaved, better motivated, and we didn't have any problems with them, they came in, did what they were supposed to do, thanks to POW. And we, and it was really shown, when we had to do the EOG tests, okay, Christmas time, when we, when we had to schedule in before Christmas, we had those kids like David, David Porter, David Giles, Walter Blue, and, you know, they would come in, Andriga's Home, would come in, you know, and proctor tests, they did it for two or three years in a row. And, you know, they were the only ones that, you know, came in, we didn't have these other people, you know, that graduated, just those, they would be there at least for about two or three years. And, and one thing about POW, now what has already been stated, it was a welcoming, nurturing, friendly place for our kids to go. And now they have not been welcomed, you know, throughout this city. They go, you know, like people would tolerate them, but they really, I mean, all kids need to be treated, you know, fairly, treated with respect, treated with dignity, and that's not the case. I have lived here for, out of my almost 78 years, 70 years, been in Dunn, and I've seen some changes, but basically the culture's still about the same as it was when I was a child, hadn't changed that much. You know, you know, people, you know, stuck in their own ways, and we don't have a lot of new people moving in with new ideas, same old, same old. And so POW, you know, is really dear to, you know, all of us, it's important, and for you to go and take the money away, especially in this political climate we have now. Look at what the Supreme Court has done in affirmative action, look what the Board of Governors, or for the university system, in the DEI. You look at legislature, voting, you know, all these things trying to dilute, voting, juror mandarin. I mean, the climate is not good at all now, and look like you want to bring it to the local level, bring it home, and do, and do something similar. It's not a good time to do it. Put the money back in POW. Now you see, because you remember where it was started, and we had some terrible things going on at one time in Dunn, and the police had to be like the caretakers of, you know, those bad kids. And, you know, it was, that's what they had to do, because parents couldn't control them. Many of these kids, you know, single parent home, and they were causing all kind of chaos in the community. And, you know, like, and that's why it was kind of set up in the first place. And, and you have funded, the council had funded POW all these years, and just this year, things changed. Now we know, you know, times are tough, times are hard, but I'm sure you can go back and look and find funds and some of this other stuff that's going on around here. And, I mean, do, do what's right, because if you don't do it now, you're going to create problems for future, okay, council, they're going to have to come back and deal with this. In the streets, you still have these older people out here trying to recruit, you know, the best, everybody wants to corrupt somebody, and you know how it operates, operate with all people. If you're doing bad, you want somebody to do bad with you, and you know, you'll go out and try to do it. And one more thing I want to say, if I can remember what it was. Now those kids and that young man that spoke, you know, what impact POW had on him. Now, those kids and that young man that spoke, you know, what impact PAL had on him. You heard the parent over there also, what they said. So, it's just so important, you know? And if you don't, if you let it go and if they can't get the grants, you're going to have the same problems again. Now, just like the other councils, okay, let this infrastructure go. Now, you have this headache now you're trying to deal with because other councils, you know, just pass it on, pass it on. And now, infrastructure, okay, is falling apart. Pipe's 100 years old, you know, and you're trying, you got to replace all this stuff now because they didn't do their due diligence. And don't you do the same, fall in the same trap, you letting things go. Just go ahead on and give them some money. If you can't give it, give them all, give them some. And show that you, you know, you're thinking about the kids too. Do that, do that. Put something in the back there. You can find it somewhere else and do the right thing. Now, we all go to church. Now, let's do church. All right. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Regina Two. I live at 710 South Ellis Avenue here in Dunn, North Carolina, the great city. I come to stand on behalf of the PAL. My son did not go to the PAL, but he volunteered for the PAL before his death. And he had a music program going there. And he loved it so well to work with so many children that were not being recognized in their schools because of their voice. He brought it out of them to sing and they sung wonderfully. Now that he has passed on, I am volunteering at the PAL. And it bothers me a little bit because I work at Littleton Shawtown. And I had a student there that had some behavior issues. And we worked with him, we got him into the PAL. When he left our school and went to middle school, he saw me at the PAL one day. And I don't know if you've ever had a child to come up to you and say, "Do you know what this means to me to be able to go to the PAL?" I don't know if you've had a child to come up to you and say that. And he said, "Ms. Regina, it helped me so much." And he's wrestling and he loves it. Could he afford this outside of the PAL? No. He cannot. Sometimes kids grow up, they don't choose their parents. And they can't hear what their parents do, but they want to have a better life. And the PAL can and will help them. So, please, do not take this funding away from something that is so great for kids. And I'm talking about not only black kids, white kids, Hispanics, I don't care where they come from. If they need the program, let them have the program. But if you take this funding away from them, they won't have something to lean on. But they're living in this great city. So, let this city be great and keep the funding there for the PAL.
Hi, I'm Crystal Moore, 503 St. Street here in Dunn. I am the College and Career Readiness Instructor at the PAL. I appreciate everybody's sharing their testimony about the PAL. I don't think our worthiness is in any question. Obviously, so many people have said, "What a great thing this has been for our community." So, that's not the question here. I will ask you this question. It's what I ask my kids and they can answer it. What is more valuable than money? Time. Time is more valuable. So, I appreciate all of you saying that you have visited the PAL, but how many have you have mentored a child or volunteered your time? Your time is much more valuable and that's something we don't have support with. So, we are understaffed and struggle to provide everything that these kids need already. So, that's my question. If you think about this in this way, if you don't want to do the dirty work at home, you don't want to cut your grass, you don't want to clean your gutters, what do you do? You pay somebody to do it. And that's what the city has done. They've paid the PAL to do the dirty work for a long time. So, I'll make this short and sweet and ask you, what happens when you stop paying somebody to do the dirty work?
Good evening. I'm Boris Ashford, 3235 Shamrock Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. However, I'm a mental coordinator at the Dunn Police Athletic League. And my flex to the kids, right? Flex mean that you have like a little rank on them is the fact that in 1995 at the Dunn Civic Center, that's when the PAL first opened up. So, that's my flex to all the kids that currently attend PAL. However, to see the growth and the development of what they have. When I say security, you got to punch in a code to get in and I'm staff. So, that tells you the growth. We didn't have that. Again, the Civic Center, if you've ever been, old, beat up, probably had rats in it, but we still was doing what it do. I remember doing flag football. If I'm not mistaken, it was Dunn Middle, right across, correct me if I'm wrong, right? Flag football, you know, the program. So, to see it now. And I also wrestle. So, to wrestle in high school and to come back and see the wrestling mats just sitting against the wall, there was many days I wanted to come in and just take the wrestling mats down and roll them out, stretch and just bring back that euphoric memory, euphoric memory, I apologize, of when I wrestle. However, to see the kids come, I'm talking white, black, Latino, Latina, whatever you want to name, is coming through those builders. And so, I take pride in staying after some days to roll around those mats. I had the opportunity to wrestle this young man right here, strong, UNC Pembroke. When he said he wrestle, he wrestle. So, I advocate for the PAL. I advocate for more funding coming through the PAL. And so, again, I took some notes, which don't mean much, but again, I do want to mention 1995 to 2004. I remember Rodney Roland coming to Triton High School to film the football games. So, it's one thing to start the PAL in 1995, but to follow someone through middle school, through high school, and to film the games and observe it and tell you where you, you know, you missing tackles. Well, I made 10 tackles, where you miss, you know, three. So, to have someone to watch you grow and watch you progress to now being able to come back 20 years later, because if you do the math, from 95 to 2024, how many years is that? 29 years. So, that's 20 years I'm able to come back and serve. So, this the conversation that we having about defunding. So, it's a sour taste. And I said, "I don't even want to get up. I don't want to speak about this." Well, like, why am I called back home to have this kind of fight? And I said, "Okay, cool. I have to do it." So, this the conversation that we having about my hometown, Dunn, North Carolina. Like, right down the street, Glamorama, we had a house, they done tore down the house. We used to walk, we used to do Roy's Sandwich Shop right here. It should be a Dollar General, something, some family dollar. So, I know Dunn. So, to come back and have this conversation right here, it's like, okay, well, this how we talking, this how we need to prepare to fight. But I'm talking for the kids that can't talk. There are some kids that come in and I won't disclose any names, but their mom, overdose. Their dad, overdose. So, we have an opioid coordinator for that, Mr. Chris Hall or Dr. Chris Hall. With some respect on his name, he's a doctor, he coming to serve. And again, I'm just the mental coordinator, but I take pride in doing so. I take pride in saying that at the age of 16, that's when I started my ministry here, realizing that in Dunn, North Carolina, realizing that I might be a little bit different. Because again, my grandparents, they pour word. When I say words of wisdom, words of God, they cover me, they prayed over me a lot. So, I may be a little different. I'm not your average Dunn product. But at the same time, it's not where you're raised, but how you're raised. So, to come back and serve is powerful. And so, again, I know we talking about possible defunding, but what's greater is like, don't take the PAL, I don't even want that to come up because that's a whole nother fight. Now, defunding is one thing and I don't want you to defund it, but I want you to see the magnitude of someone come 20 years, a way of 20 years to come back and just serve. That's all I want to do. I don't want nothing to get in the way of that. So, I come to serve. I come here to speak on behalf of the kids that can't articulate what need to be said and what need to be done. But at the same time, if it's just a pen that need to be pushed, we need more money because the staff definitely go hard. I'm talking about Alexander Harris, I'm talking about Ms. Crystal Moore, I don't want to mess the name up, Priscilla Walden. I want to, get me right. Now, y'all in the back, back there, Mr. B., when I say go hard, they go hard. That impressed me more than anything. Mr. Walden, he's our custodian. So, to see that the PAL was functioning for all these years without me, I said, "Hmm, now's my turn. What am I going to do about this? How am I going to act?" So, to show up and advocate for my kids is too easy. But we talking about money and the kids are not even in this building to even advocate. So, again, we do need more funding. But definitely think about the impact that's in this room. I didn't have to come up and say anything, but I felt compelled to. All right? And those that have not volunteered as a mental coordinator, I want to give you an application to come out and volunteer and see for yourself. All right? Y'all have a good one.
Good evening. I'm James Berry, 6492 Green Meadow Road, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I drive 80 miles a day to get here. I love what I do. I love my job. I was an instructor for some time and then I moved up into administration. And when I came into the PAL administration, I had no idea how much we actually did. As an instructor, I taught for 5th grade, middle school, high school, loved it. Education is who I am. I come from Cumberland County where everything was pretty simple. Here, I learned the struggle was real, as the children say. And I will admit, it took me about five years to get my bearings. They ran over me the first two years. Year three, I became a thug. So, I'm really, really proud of my development. I say that because you've heard about the kids. But the development of the staff and the parents is what I learned about when I hit administration two years ago. I learned that I have parents who don't know how to parent and it's not their fault. They had babies young, so I'm literally 15 years older than my kid, trying to figure out how to raise a child, run a family, master a budget, financial leadership, all of that. And being a part of their life and them welcome you in is a whole nother thing altogether. And Dunn PAL does that. And I had no idea how serious it was, how much it was needed to lock arms with a mom or a dad who'd never done it. Life has happened and now you get to help them get through it. It's an honor and a privilege, one that I'm not sure we would be able to do if the budget is cut. I am glad that we are doing well. I remember about seven years ago, we lost a state budget, 21st Century Grant. And Captain Roland, well, retired Captain Roland, had to pull some strings. And we had to collaborate with the community to figure out what we would do to get that funding back. And we bounced back. Then, soon as we survived, three years later, COVID happened. We had no children. What do you do when you have no kids? Well, we identified a need. Seeing the need verifies our purpose. So, we fed families, all of our vans, the instructors became lunch people and we were PAL eats. We were all over Dunn, Bun Level, Irwin, you name it, delivering meals from the schools to their homes so they could eat. And by that next summer, we were back rocking and rolling. And we had no COVID cases, no issues, nothing of the sort. God has tremendously blessed us. And now, I am worried about the capacity of our program, if we can do it and if we really understood clearly as far as what is needed. And it may not sound like a lot, that $100,000, but for us, it is because it's a gap. And even if you apply for a grant, they always ask a very specific question that scares me as an administrator, is sustainability. If we don't fund you, can you stand on your own? And without this, that is a challenge. Because if you can't support yourself, it's really hard to get support from other people. They want to know that even if we can't do it, can you do it by yourself? And with this being gone, this is going to be a big gap for us that will affect us in the long term. So, I hope that you will consider that as well. Thank you.
I'm Janet Doffmeyer. I live at 901 West Pope Street, Dunn, North Carolina. And I wrote you a letter with my feelings about the PAL, but I just couldn't stay in my seat right now because I just feel like I need to add a little bit more. I serve on the Board of Directors of the PAL and I love it. And I serve as a mentor, which I've been out of place for the last few months. I serve as a mentor to children at the PAL. And I've had the honor of knowing and loving most of your children through the schools. And I love the Dunn children that are at the PAL. Nathan, I love you. And I am so proud of you tonight for what you stood up here and said. Those children are amazing and they need your support. There's, I'm not going to talk about the money because I know you can make that happen. I know that the money, you can make the money happen. But I wanted to challenge you to do what I've done. Because if you haven't done what I've done, you can't really give this 100%. Because I'm in the building and I see children who were in my school who were hidden or who were intimidated. And I go into the PAL and I see those children shining. They own that place. They're flying drones, they're showing us, they're making videos, they're doing wonderful things. And they're eating their meal when they get there. They're thrilled to death to see you. I challenge each one of you to become a mentor. Two times a month, for one of the children, you will be a superstar in their life. And they will open up to you. I've had one to tell me before about her daddy, situation with her daddy, being in prison and just sit there, we play Uno, we do math, we do flashcards, we talk about life. And they need that. It's one of the greatest things I've ever done, being involved in this organization. And I'm very passionate about it. We're doing, we've done a good job. We've got a board that is so dedicated and a staff that's amazing. And we've done good things, but we need support. We actually need more support than the number indicates. You've heard wrestling all through the conversation? We need a place for our children to have a wrestling home. That's in our strategic plan, to look a place for our children to have a home for wrestling. We need help getting the second floor of our building renovated so we can have more classrooms for more children. So, we need the support of our city. And I would absolutely be hurt, and I said in my letter, offended and embarrassed if our city turned our back on such a wonderful program. And once again, I challenge you to become involved. You will be amazed if you become a part of this organization. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Crystal McBride. Address is 1371 Three Bridge Road, Dunn, North Carolina. I am standing here, I used to attend the PAL. So, from experience, I also enrolled my son, which is here, he's here. I just want to stand here and speak just the things that I have experienced with the PAL with me having my son. My son was struggling academically. It was to the point, I'm a very emotional person, especially when it comes to my kid. The PAL, all the teachers, they supported me. Any type of meeting that I had to go to to figure out how we can get my son on the right path academically, they were there to support me 100%. To me, the PAL is like family. If I have any concern, issues, I'm comfortable with picking up the phone, saying, "Hey, you guys, like, hey, I got a meeting at school, I need help with this, can you guys help me?" Every time that I have reached out to them for help with my son, they're always there. My son was getting bullied at school. I heard so many people say, speak about the wrestling program. My son, 10 years old, he started wrestling. It started with wrestling. Once he started wrestling, his confidence in himself improved a million percent. He has teachers here right now that could witness and tell you, a whole totally different kid. He has character. Part of him having the character is me because I'm a single mom. But however, I do a great job of raising my son, teaching my son about character. However, the PAL has played a tremendous role with also helping him build character in himself. Not only my son, but you have kids. When we, when I get older, everybody else in here that's older, when they pass away, they leave, it's our kids that's left here. So, if you see a program that is benefiting our youth, our future, why would you want to defund it regardless of? why would you want to defund it regardless of a grant or however? This is our future. Like the ladies, like she said, y'all said the great city of Dunn. How can our city continue to be great and you're not doing something to benefit the youth? It's already bad enough they don't have anything to do. The only thing that the kids have to do around here is the Powell. They got the recreation. They have to pay for the rent. A lot of parents can't afford to pay for the rent. And if you stay out of the city limits, they have to pay more. So you have parents that might want to get their kids in the recreation to play sports, but they can't afford it. But you have the Powell that offer free sports for the kids. So if the kids have nothing to do, their minds are lingering. Parents have to work. Now they're idle minded. Now they want to go out here and join the game. Now they want to go out here and let somebody that shouldn't be a mentor be a mentor, a drug dealer, or somebody that doesn't have the right perception for the kids. So as a, like, for you guys to sit here, like, if you have kids, just put yourself in a lot of these kids' shoes that don't have nowhere to turn. Y'all don't have anything for these kids to do. What do they do? Can anybody answer? There's nothing for them to do but the Powell. Y'all got a swimming pool over there. Like, y'all can add more stuff, like, to make, if y'all, you're talking about defunding, but the kids don't have anything to do. So the least y'all can do is really keep the funding for the Powell. Really, y'all really should give them more money so they can bring more kids in, honestly.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. On behalf of the board, we'd like to thank each of you for coming out tonight. It's good to see citizens involved in our government, and we appreciate you coming out. At this point, I am going to close the public hearing, and we will move to talk about some other items on our agenda. If you're welcome to stay and as we conduct the balance of our meeting here, if you would like to. And if you'd like to be excused, we'll give you a minute to do that as well.
Mayor, I would like to say something before we move on.
Okay. Go ahead.
I would like to speak on behalf of myself and on behalf of Ward 3, our community. I have heard through the grapevine that everybody on city council is against the Powell. That's not true. My son also grew up with the Powell. And I don't want to get emotional, but he's still over here. But he had a great deal to do with the Powell. Now, his son is here and has a great deal to do with the Powell. So everybody has their own thoughts, their own opinions. You know, I have been where you are in those seats, and now I'm in this seat. Okay? So I have to look at things on both sides now. But I totally agree that the Powell has been very influential on our community. Okay? I do see where these kids have grown in the Powell. They're continuing to grow. Some of the students and the community, children that have gone on to do great things, come back and put back into our community. It's very much appreciated. And I mean, it's, I getting to know Coach B. through my grandson. The police officers working with my son when he was growing up. Not that he was always into anything and everything, but sometimes, you know. But by him knowing the police officers, they were there to talk to him, you know. I also grew up as a single parent for the most part. But I did have a foundation with my family that helped me. But the Powell, I understand, does help, you know, other families where they need that stability. Okay? But there are things that we have to look at on both sides. What needs to be done within the community and for the Powell. As an organization and an entity, as the Powell itself now, and everybody that's here now, I hope that you will support the Powell in the way that you're supporting it tonight, individually. You know, not come and blame the city council for what you think we're taking away from the community. Because we all have a job. And I see the looks on your faces, but we all individually have a job. It's not just 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 that gets the blame. Because like I said, I was there, and now I'm here. But I'm not taking anything from the Powell. It helped my son. My son loved basketball. He played every sport that he could play. And so did my grandson, and he's still into it. I'm not taking anything away from it. I think it's the best thing that could have come to Dunn. But by it being moved out, I think it has taken away from the heart of our community by being not in the heart of our community. Our kids can't get to the gym and play, have free play, do the things that they need to do like my son used to when the Powell was over at the gym. And I understand you grow and you get better and things get better. And we do need that. And we, and the program has gotten a lot better. But there are still some students and children out here that need to be directed to the Powell if that's where we're directing our children. Because we still do have some that need the help. And I hope that the gym could be opened so that these kids will, that can't get out to the vans and to the Powell outside, that they can get to a place where they can still have fun, where they can still go and have that free play, where they can still be involved, and that our police officer will still be just as involved as they were when my son was coming up. I don't really see the involvement with our police officers as it was in the earlier years. And I'm just throwing this out here, you guys, because it's stuff that I also see. I'm a Dunn resident. I grew up here, just like you all did. We can't give all praises just to the Powell. We got to do our part too as parents, as grandparents, as citizens of Dunn. And because we, money comes into play, then it's a big deal. But there's other thing that goes on, but just besides funding and money. We got to take the time with our own children. I just felt compelled to say that because I've been there, you know? Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments? Right. The next item on the agenda tonight is Item 4, which is a proposed annexation. And I'm going to turn this over to the city manager, Mr. New Schaefer, for a report on this, along with Mr. McNally, the finance director.
So Mayor and council members, what you have before you is a voluntary annexation petition, ANX-02-24. This is an annexation request for a voluntary annexation that was presented to you in the May 28 council meeting, where you passed a resolution directing the clerk to investigate the voluntary annexation. We're now at a point where we would like to ask you to consider a resolution fixing a date for a public hearing, June 25, 2024, for the voluntary contiguous annexation petition. You have the information attached in your packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
This came before us recently, as Steve said, and I think everybody's familiar with it. Are there any other questions or concerns on this annexation proposal?
I make a motion to adopt a resolution fixing the date of a public hearing as June 24th, 25th, excuse me, 2024, at 6:30 for the voluntary contiguous annexation petition.
Okay.
A motion by Councilmember Hargis and a second by Councilmember Seals. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is a landscape maintenance contract. And I'd like to turn that over to the city manager.
Once again, Mayor and council members, what you have before you is a request I'm making to extend the current landscape agreement with Old Mill Stream to continue it for 18-month extension. Our thoughts in this is we've been doing it year to year, but when it ends in the middle of the grass cutting season, and the end of June is when the contract expires, there's not a real good transition point if we were to bid the project and have a transition. Right in the middle of the growing season seems to be asking for issues. We have talked to the contractor already and informed him that we'll likely go out for a competitive bid at the end of this term. And that's why we're asking for 18 months so that we can do that during the winter season. So we'll be probably bidding and accepting bids next summer, and then transitioning, if there is a transition, but making the transition to the next contract during the winter non-growing season, just to make sure that we have a seamless transition, if there is one. But he understood that. He has given us a proposal for an 18-month contract, and you have the proposed monthly payments in your packet. And happy to talk about anything. He's not here tonight. If there are specific questions that you have for him, probably if I'm not able to answer them, I'd probably just ask that we table this till the next meeting so he could be here to answer any specific questions about the contract. But if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Otherwise, I put this extension in front of you for consideration.
I got a question. So how often do we bid this out?
We bid this out two years ago, I believe. There was a bid packet and a request for proposal sent out. And at that time, the council extended the current contract for two more seasons. And that's where we're, I think that's where we're at now.
Now, have we ever done it ourselves?
Yes. Probably seven or eight years ago, we were doing it ourselves. Yep.
And we did, whether we decided, whether we decided not to continue?
I think the, there was a, just a consensus among the council at the time. This is prior to my being in this seat. But I think basically the staffing issues and the splitting of the, because the cemetery crew used to do all the mowing across all the different departments and everything. And just the scope and the busy season for funerals, had them getting behind on some of the median cutting and things like that. And that's why we basically moved it from that.
So in the summertime, I get that the grass grows, and it's a lot of stuff to cut. But in December and February and all that, what, are they doing things there at that time too? Or what is that?
Yeah, they're, it's not as focused at that time. But yes, they're blowing off the, they do all the leaf removal. They blow off the parking lots and things like that and do other things. But yes, it's a step down, you know, level of service during the winter time. And that's why we thought it was a good time to do a transition if we needed to.
But the payments are the same all year, right?
That's right. It's equalized payments because it's easy for the city to do it that way. It's a one lump sum bid spread over 12, 12, in this case, 18 months. I've talked to each of the departments. Each one has a touch point with the contractor for their specific areas, and I had no negative feedback.
Alan, I felt like you when I first got on the council. I said, why don't we just do it ourselves? Apparently Dr. Brightman used to mow the grass around here when he was in high school. But apparently it is more the finances with support going with the contractor than doing it in-house. So if we make budget-driven decisions, we should go with the contractor. But I did ask that very same question. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the extension of the Old Mill Stream contract for fiscal year 2425 as presented.
Second.
Okay. A motion by Councilmember Seals, second by Councilmember Gordon. Any further discussion? So all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We had an addition to the agenda tonight, and it was classified as Item 5A. And I am going to turn this over to the city attorney for explanation of this and what we got going on with this.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have seemed to brought in some reading glasses that are missing alone. So I'll do the best I can and close one eye. As councils aware, I've distributed information to all of you previously. The Environmental Protection Agency has promulgated new regulations regarding the amount of forever chemicals that can be contained in drinking water, which, when adopted, are going to require every producer of public drinking water throughout the country to spend a lot of money on equipment and training and staff to modify and filter, further filter these chemicals out of the water. And the law firms that are indicated in your package, there are three different law firms indicated, with the local one being the Hutchins Law Firm out of Fayetteville, are representing about 25 cities and counties throughout North Carolina against the manufacturers of forever chemicals to try and recoup some of the cost that the city of Dunn will incur in the future relative to these upgrades. And so you have before you a legal services agreement to authorize them to represent the city in this federal litigation against the manufacturers of the forever chemicals. It is all on a contingency fee, which means the city will incur no attorney fee unless they make a recovery on your behalf, in which event they get 25%. And they fund all of the cost associated with the litigation as well, which does not have to be repaid unless there is a recovery, in which event they get reimbursed. Therefore, there is no monetary risk to the city of any cost or expenses associated with this litigation. So the matter before you is to approve the legal services agreement as presented for these attorneys to represent the city of Dunn in this litigation.
I don't see this problem going away. I think it's probably going to get worse, unfortunately. And I think the city needs to be protected. And so as a result of that, I'm going to make a motion to approve the legal services agreement with the law firms of Baron and Budd, PC, Costich, Sumich, Parsiola, and Taylor, LLC, and the Hutchins Law Firm to represent the city of Dunn in litigation against the manufacturers of forever chemicals as presented.
Second. Okay. Motion by Councilmember Brightman, and second, Councilmember McNeil. So any discussion, any questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries on that. Thank you. All right. Do we have some items that are up for discussion? And at this time, I'd like to introduce to the board Haley Hoag. Hoag?
Hoag.
Hoag, I'm sorry.
You're fine. Everyone says Hoag.
It's spelled, okay. And Assistant City Manager Billy Godwin to come up. And Haley, I'll let you tell us a little bit about yourself and who you are and your relationship to the city, if you would.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So Haley, given her outstanding background credentials, needed her own introduction. And I was here to do that. But since the mayor has directed that you introduce yourself, you know, I take my orders from the mayor and the city manager, so it's all yours.
Let me, let me ask you to introduce, Billy. I didn't know this was what you were doing.
That's okay. So Haley is, well, as you all know, George Adler retired at the end of May. And so now the city is without a planning director. And we are fortunate enough to have, to be affiliated with the Mid-Carolina Council of of Government, or the MCOT, as we like to refer to it. The COG is a, an organization that provides services to cities and counties within, throughout the state. Haley is the planning director for the Mid-Carolina Council of Government. She has 10 years of planning and zoning experience. She is a certified zoning officer. She is a credentialed planner, and she has just a lot of experience, and we're very fortunate to have her with us. We're under contract with the, with the Council of Government to use her services, as well as the services of some of her, the planners that work with and under her. So just as a little bit of additional background, as a practical matter, Haley will be, either Haley or one of her planners that work under her will be in the planning office probably around three days a week, and will be there, you know, as needed at other times as necessary. And she's actually already been to the first planning board meeting, and Haley will also be attending council meetings when there's planning and zoning materials before the council as tonight. So thank you for being with us, Haley, and it's all yours.
Good evening, council. I've spent the past week just getting up to date on all the projects, and you all have a lot going on, so I'm excited to be here and help you kind of navigate the planning projects as you search for your new director. Look forward to working with all of you.
Welcome, yeah.
Thank you. So with that, are we moving on to item number six?
Yes, please. And just reminder to the board, tonight is a workshop, so we will not be making the decision on this tonight. This is just for informational purposes and questions answered, should you have any. And the decision will be made on this at our regular scheduled meeting later in the month.
Okay. So this item is CZ0424, which is a conditional zoning application for 112 South Fayetteville Avenue. The property, the subject property is .52 acres. It is currently occupied by an existing building. That building was previously used as a car dealership or repair shop and has been vacant for some time now. The applicant is requesting a conditional zoning to rezone from C3 Highway Commercial District to C1, which is the central commercial district, with conditional zoning. So the applicant has requested conditional zoning to limit the proposed uses on the site. The applicant was proposing multifamily, restaurant, banquet, event space, bar, tavern, microbrewery, and general commercial. If approved, the rezoning, if approved, the multifamily use and the banquet and event space use would still be subject to a special use permit in addition to this rezoning. So they would still be coming back before the board, or before the council for that special use permit in the future to establish it. As outlined in the staff report, the rezoning has been determined to be reasonable and consistent with the surrounding conditions and development pattern of the area, as well as the future land use map. The parcel is designated as downtown in the future land use map, which includes a mixture of residential, retail, and entertainment uses, all of which include the proposed uses by the applicant. The application was heard by the planning board on June 4th last Tuesday. The board did bring up some concerns regarding parking at that meeting, especially as it pertains to the potential banquet or event space use of the site. Ultimately, though, they voted four in favor and one opposed to recommending approval to the council. They did not recommend any conditions of approval when they made that motion. And so the application is now scheduled for tonight's work session, and then we'll proceed to the June 25th city council meeting for a public hearing and final decision. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
What is the multifamily?
So that would be apartments. I believe from what the applicant was going over at the last meeting, they were thinking upper story residential.
What is the plan? What is, I mean, I know that these uses are subject to whatever the uses are, but what's the plan?
So the applicant, my understanding is with their application, he submitted a sketch drawing of the building and how he might lay out the uses. I can definitely ask him at the public hearing to bring forth a more detailed description of the project, but my understanding is kind of a mixed use downtown, commercial with some upper story residential, potentially the banquet or event space as well. Okay.
Well, I hope he does quite well, whether he makes a fortune and pays a lot in taxes. So give him my blessing.
There you go.
I'll vote for him next, next time.
Yes, and I'll ask him to make sure that he's prepared to go over more of the plan for the site, and I'll make sure that any sketch drawings that we have are included in that agenda packet.
I think probably going forward, it would be nice if we could, since these are work sessions, if we could have those here so we could see it and deliberate on it and think about it, because that's the whole reason that we have these, so we have some time to digest it and act on it and things like that.
Absolutely.
So I think going forward, when you're working with these people, see if they could come tonight, if they have something, so we have time to think about it.
Okay, absolutely.
And just as a reminder to the council, because this is a rezoning matter and not approving a particular plan, even though the applicant may have a sketch of something, that doesn't mean that's what it's going to be. What you are considering is just what are the available uses?
I understand that, but I still would like to see what he.
Sure, if somebody has a sketch.
Right, right, right.
But sometimes they don't.
Right.
No, I just, you know, if, the one thing about this is so that you can, you know, get the information and talk, it's not necessarily to have a dialogue with the applicant either. That's for the public hearing that is scheduled. Tough to then essentially have them vetting their project without, you know, other people, you know, being invited to the.
Any further questions for Haley or for the city manager? All right, thank you for that report, and I would like for you to move on with item seven, Haley.
Yes, so this application is CZ0524, which is another conditional rezoning request. The request is for three subject parcels located at the corner of Jernigan Road and US 301 North. The parcels in total are 2.3 acres combined. The applicant is requesting to rezone from R20 Residential District to C3 Highway Commercial Conditional Zoning District. The applicant is proposing at this time to limit the use to self-storage facility and that be the only permitted use on the site. To the east is the Warren Oil Company, and just south of that is an undeveloped 10-acre parcel also owned by the Warren Oil Company. Additionally, to the southwest is commercial and office uses, and to the north and west of the site are single-family residential uses. The property is located at the corner of a gateway into Dunn from the north into the town or into the city, and C3 is a compatible zoning district with what's out there currently along 301. And even though self-storage is not entirely desirable sometimes at a high-profile or highly visible gateway into the community, it is consistent with that current development pattern occurring in that area, especially with Warren Oil Company directly across the street. And last week, planning board did hear this application on June 4th. There was some neighbor opposition from the residential neighbors on Jernigan Road. They felt that the use would be incompatible potentially with their residential uses, and ultimately, after hearing the opposition, planning board voted three in favor and two opposed to recommending approval with the following conditions. The first condition recommended was limiting the use to self-storage facility as outlined in the application. They also recommended a condition to require a type A landscape buffer along the residential properties. They required or recommended a condition that no access be permitted off of Jernigan Road, since that is where the residential uses were located. And they also recommended a condition that a six-foot tall privacy fence be required in the type A buffer to provide additional screening for those residential homes. And the next step is that the application is scheduled after tonight for the June 25th public hearing before the city council. If you have any questions, I can answer those.
I would have a question. If the planning board has recommended no, no access from Jernigan Road, would, what would requirements from DOT be on Highway 301 for access to the facility?
So I have not spoken to DOT. I can reach out to the district, though, and see what their requirements would be, and review the TRC comments and see if there was anything at that time from DOT.
Usually, we don't necessarily hear from DOT by the time this process is completed. And since we don't have control over it, you know, it's kind of up to their, their decision and their discretion to require something from the developers. We don't necessarily usually get an opportunity to voice any opinion on that. They make a decision unilaterally from, from what else is going on, based on their specifications. So I don't know that we'll necessarily have a final idea what it's going to require. Might be a turn lane, might not be a turn lane. It just depends on what they feel the, the scope and impact on the, on the traffic and the, of course, the speed limit as well has a factor in that as well.
The daycare center that way there, just north of there, wasn't there probably DOT?
There was some questions, yes. And I think part of the description is a little bit off on what's to the east, because not only is Warren Oil to the east, but there is already existing self-storage units to the east as well. They're visible in the photograph, and you can go out there and see them from the road as well.
Any questions for Haley or city staff?
No, I was not at the meeting, but I was told by people that were at the meeting that the gentleman, Mr. Barefoot, came in, heard some concerns, and addressed them at the meeting. Is that correct? Changing some entrance ways and things based on what he was.
The applicant?
Yes.
Yes, the applicant was at the meeting, and there was discussion once there was some neighborhood opposition with the board about what could be done, potentially.
The applicant wanted to do right by the neighbors.
They were not opposed to limiting the access or a privacy fence of some kind.
And that's where the conditions came from, is that back and forth. I was at the meeting, so I saw it.
Thank you for that one, and if you would take item eight for us, please.
Yes. So item number eight is CZ0624, which is another conditional rezoning request. This is for three parcels located off of North Powell Avenue with access to West Cumberland Street. There are two parcels included that are zoned R20, and the third parcel is split zone between R20 and C2. The applicant is not proposing to modify the C2 zoning. They want to reserve that for potential future commercial development, if anyone wants to develop that in the future. But they are requesting to rezone the R20 portions from R20 to MXU, Mixed Use District Conditional Zoning. They are requesting to limit the uses of the site to residential, which would be single-family detached and single-family attached townhomes. They are also proposing in the uses to allow recreational facilities indoor and outdoor, as well as utilities class one and two, and that use is added due to the existing pipeline that is currently located on the parcel. The use of townhomes, if the rezoning is approved, would still be subject to a special use permit as well. After reviewing the application, staff determined the request is consistent and reasonable with the development pattern in the area. The future land use map does designate the property as medium-density residential, which includes a variety of uses, or mixture of uses of townhomes, single-family. The applicant did also submit a master plan, which is displayed on the screen, and this master plan does meet the minimum requirements of the UDO and shows the general location and layout of where the single-family and townhomes could be located, as well as the amenity area and some open space. They are proposing on this master plan two access points off Powell Avenue with one stub street to the north. And again, this is just the preliminary master plan, so a more detailed plan typically comes in at the special use permit when you get to the townhome use, and then for the preliminary plat is when you would see the lots laid out after they do the engineering and design a little bit more. At planning board, there was no neighborhood opposition at the meeting. However, the board did have concerns related to the level of detail on the master plan shown. They requested the applicant provide a little bit more detail so that they would be more comfortable moving forward with a motion to recommend one way or the other to the council. So the planning board ultimately made a motion to table the item until the July 2nd planning board meeting, requesting the applicant bring forth a more detailed master plan. The applicant agreed to do so, and that motion passed, three in favor and two opposed. And so tonight, we have the application here before us, and it has already been advertised for the June 25th meeting. So what we would request is on June 25th to open the public hearing and then continue it to July 23rd, so that planning board does have a chance to make that recommendation on July 2nd.
Would be any, with this blend, looks like right here at Black River, any wetland issues here at all, or?
There, they do identify the wetland area, I believe, on this master plan. They are going through the permitting process with the state, so they'll be required to, you know, comply with all state regulations and whatnot regarding wetlands.
We'd be asked to approve it contingent upon what the state.
Yes, so this is just the approval for the uses in the conditional zoning, and then again, they still have to go through the engineering and design of the site, and then permitting and everything with the state as well.
Are we, are we going to make a motion to table it until? No motion required until tonight's meeting, but next, at our next meeting. Okay. Correct.
Yes, that's correct.
So there again, this is just for informational purposes so that we can begin to look this over and have a better idea of what we're going to be receiving in the future on this project. Any other questions?
Why do they want to do a stub street?
So the UDO does require where you can to provide stubs to adjacent undeveloped properties so that you can have that interconnectivity in the future. So if that property to the north does get developed someday, they would be able to connect through and kind of take some of that traffic off the main road.
They have, they, they even want to buy that property and develop it?
That I am unsure of. But the applicant will be here for the public hearing once it is scheduled in July.
More comments or questions?
And then, did you say the public hearing was going to be in June and then it's continued to July?
Yes, so because the application was already advertised by statute so that we don't have to re-advertise again, it will have to be open for public hearing on June 25th, and then the council can officially continue to a date specific, which would be July 23rd, and then the advertisement would not have to be done again.
So he's going to be here on June?
I will check. I will check with him, because we are opening the public hearing, I'll reach out to the applicant.
Can I ask a question? When is the public hearing?
So June 25th is the scheduled public hearing. It is going back to planning board on July 2nd because they did table the project. So typically, planning board will make a recommendation to the council. So it will be on July 2nd going to planning board, and then if the council votes on June 25th to continue it, it will go to the July 23rd council meeting.
Any further questions? Thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine is wastewater allocations report, and I will turn this over to Steve.
All right, thank you, Mayor and council. I just wanted to bring you up to date on the wastewater allocation for the city of Dunn. You have a separate packet that was handed out tonight. It was realized later on that some of the two-sided pages in your existing packet didn't get copied from both sides, so the one that's handed out this evening is the full packet, as well as an update on the number of gallons for, each bedroom was amended by the state of North Carolina, December 13th, 2023. That, that memo is in your packet as well. So as you're well aware.
So as your wellware, we have a certain amount of sewer allocation that is allowed to be used by the city for new development. Under the policy, the city manager is able to grant allocation up to 10,000 gallons per day for non-residential allocation. And as you go through, what you have here is a full accounting of the allocations that we have provided to individual properties or to developments. You'll see some of the larger ones are actual developments. They'll have a permit number next to them, like the Middleton Towns, and some other ones, as you go through the listing, and you'll see the, in red, the amount of wastewater allocation that was allocated to that project, whether it be a single-family home, or a business, or a development. On the top right-hand side, where you see the thick black line there, you'll see our number of 332,000 gallons is a total there. That is what we have been allowed to allocate since the SOC was agreed upon. So that 332,000 gallons is a gallons-per-day number. In addition to that, as we complete projects, that number will increase by a specified amount that's in the SOC as well. As an example, our wastewater treatment plant project is winding down and getting ready to be completed in the next couple of months. I would anticipate, by the time we close out the project later this summer, we'll be allowed to add that allocation, and that project is valued, and I put "valued" in air quotes, at 100,000 gallons per day. So later on this summer, if that number were to stay the same, we'd be looking at 432,000 gallons per day, which we would be allowed to allocate. So saying that, you can go through and see the number of allocations that we've made, all the way down to June 4th. What you'll see on the next one, is what I'm going to bring to you at the next meeting, is 453 Rooms to Go Way Industrial Development. They're seeking 29,400 gallon allocation. Their application to develop 100 acres just north of Rooms to Go has been applied for at the city permitting office, and that allocation would go towards an industrial spec building with over a million square feet of space, and that's what that would go to. We have to determine what amount of allocation goes to any specific project, and you'll find in the general statutes, it lays out specifically how to calculate that number, and that's how we came to 29,400. So I'm not allowed to allocate that much. That's a city council decision, so that'll be on your next meeting, as the developers of the project have asked for that allocation. Other than that, I wanted to just bring you up to date as where is our, where our number is, and as you can see, the subtotal, right now, we're sitting at about 265,000 gallon allocation remaining, so we have a lot of ability to add development and sewer taps to the system. So right now, we're not in any jeopardy of using that up, and plus, we have another 100,000 gallons coming this fall. So just wanted to let you know, bring you up to speed on where the process was, and see if you had any questions about the process, or where the daily flow was at.
When are we supposed to be released from the SOC?
The project, all the projects are to be completed at the end of 2026. And at that time, they'll evaluate whether or not the projects and the work that's been completed is sufficient to eliminate our stormwater, our wastewater overflow issues. It's not a guarantee, but obviously, the state has invested and feels good to, you know, what we've laid out as a plan to, you know, accomplish the goals that they have set before us, so. But at the end of 2026 is when all the projects have to be completed, and that's when we're to evaluate the SOC.
Have any questions on this allocation, or any of the other items we've talked about? Feel free to contact Steve or Billy for clarification, and we'll hopefully be in a position to make decisions at our next meeting on all of these items. Anything else, Steve, on that?
Uh, no, sir.
Excuse me. Item 10, we've all been involved in the budget preparations for a number of months, and most especially in, over the last few weeks, and we've heard many people from the public speak tonight. We've had, I don't know, maybe a dozen people to speak, and all the comments that were made, and just like to open the floor, if there's any questions about the budget, I would like to turn it over before I open it up. I'd like to ask Steve to sort of take it from here.
Sure. Well, Carrie and I have, you know, set out the, and published the proposed budget with the message as well. Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, there's a lot of moving parts in the budget, and I know there's been a lot of work with our departments and with you all. Just wanted to know, you know, as we come up to the next, the next decision point in the budget, to see if there was any questions, or any other discussions that needed to happen before our next meeting, when we're scheduled to adopt the budget. So just wanted to have a spot to be able to answer any questions you might have.
Is that the public hearing?
That was the public hearing.
Public hearing's already over with. Carrie is with us also tonight, so if there are any questions for Carrie, or Steve, or any comments board members would like to make. And as I stated earlier tonight, there will be no action taken on the budget tonight, but we do need to be prepared to make a decision at our next meeting.
Oh, hang on, Mr. Mayor, for maybe people listening, I saw where someone said that we were defunding the library as well, which is not true. Perhaps, Steve, you could expand on how we are reducing funding for the library from the city side, and how the library is being taken over by the county, which will allow for more resources for the kids and other library patrons that would not be provided if it was still under the city umbrella.
Sure. The county did a county-wide plan where they absorbed each of the municipal libraries into the county system, ours being one of them, and there was a three-year program where our portion of the budget was reduced by a third, and so that's, that's where the reduction in the, in the spending for the library comes from, is because the county has taken over the library portion of it. We still maintain the building, and so we still cut the grass and do the landscaping there. So, you know, we are essentially a landlord for the county at that thing, so we still have some budgetary requirements for the library, but it's just reduced now to upkeep of the building, you know, repair of utilities and services at the, at the facility itself, and then maintenance on that, on the grounds as well. So that's, that's where that comes from.
Other comments, or anything from board members concerning the budget?
Yes. Going back to the PAL, I would like for the council to think about it, think about all the things that have been said tonight. If that 115 cannot be funded to the PAL totally, I would like you all to think about funding something to the PAL. And if not, we need to find a way for some funding to go into War III and part of War II for the community, for our community.
Again, I'd like to thank all of the public for coming out. Several have, have left, but thank you all for coming out. Couple of announcements I'd like to make tonight is a, it's coming up in the next few days, the annual 301 Endless Yard Sale will return this year and run through Dunn, and that will be on Friday, June 14th and the 15th, from 7:00 in the morning to 5:00 PM. This event extends through five counties, from Halifax County to Harneck County, so we're the, on the beginning end, or the, or the end. We're on the beginning or the end, whichever way you look at it in the ride, but glad Harneck County and Dunn is able to participate in that. Juneteenth Community Celebration will be held Saturday, June 15th, at Cotterington Park, and that event will be from 11:00 in the morning until 3:00 PM. Couple of announcements. City of Dunn has just been awarded a grant for stormwater repairs. The grant was $500,000, and that will go towards some projects that we are working on now. We do not have, this is certainly a large amount of money that we've been funded, but it's only a portion of the project. So we've got to get busy and find the remaining funds to make, make a sizable project work, so that we can help solve some stormwater issues, which are all over town. Yesterday, it was announced in this city hall that the congressman out of Washington, DC presented us with a check that will be used for the I-95, I-40 Alliance, and that grant was for $1,466,000. And as most of you know, the Alliance was formed with the City of Dunn and the town of Four Oaks, and we have a lot of great things going on between these two communities along I-95 corridor. The Magnolia School Building is under construction now to be transformed into a state-of-the-art facility. It's about a 13 to 14 million dollar project. All monies has been secured for that project, and that will be a workforce training center to train people in our area for new industry. There is a building being built, also a new building being built in Four Oaks, and the cost of that building is, is larger than ours, but they're building a new building, and we're able to rehab a, an existing building we have. Both buildings will be housed and operated by Community College. Central Carolina will operate the, the building in Dunn for workforce training, and Johnston Community College will operate the facility in Four Oaks, so we're really excited about that. The money that was given to us will provide equipment in both of these buildings, so that we can be prepared to do workforce training. The Dunn operation will do biotech training, as well as computer training, and also have offices for new industry that will be locating along the corridor. Advanced Manufacturing will be at the Four Oaks site, and we'll both use those facilities. So if Dunn lands an industry that needs advanced manufacturing, they will use the training center in Four Oaks, and if, if either one of us lands something with a biotech need, that training will go on in Dunn. So it's two communities, two municipalities, and two counties working well together, and we've got a lot of exciting things that are happening industry-wise, that hopefully will come to fruition here in the, you know, next few weeks and months. So we look forward to that, and we're very thankful for the, the vision that the federal, the congressman and the federal government had in funding this project for us. So if there's nothing else to come before the board tonight, we will stand adjourned and see you all at our next meeting.